Good morning, and welcome to the Public Hearing Committee of the Whole. This is our ten, ten A.M., and my welcome guests are President of the Council, Andrew Graham, Seth, and Jack Evans, Chairman of the Committee. We're going to start with a one to note that I've been fed on it, but we are going to have an earthquake drill at approximately 1:17 this morning, which is about seven minutes from now. The drill should last no more than two minutes, and if there's any bad movement, we're going to stay in our seats here. So, uh, so we're not prepared for that when it happens. Although I have to say, I don't know exactly what is going to happen, so we'll find out when it happens. And I'm sure that's going to happen. Okay, the drill's not going to shake, and you know, okay. It won't shake, just see how that looks. Uh, my chairman's meeting is on Tuesday, uh, for the residential real property, equity, and transparency act of 2013, Bill 30418, the senior citizen real property tax relief act of 2013, Bill 3476, the district real property tax settlement act of 2014. The court preparing notice and handwriting to the reverse list of demand for 1224, the real property tax settlement of the transparency act of 2013, I will consider this proposal one of the others on the current notice, however, and I have included this bill in my circulation of current materials. My acquaintance, the Attorney General Eric Nathan, will be given testimony on behalf of the executive on this and whatever bills that are under consideration. This term is the culmination of many efforts that I have undertaken to form a real capital taxation process in the district. Along with that, I was distraught to read the series of stories in the Washington Post about seniors and others having their homes taken for small tax debts. First, I had this type of problem that I never got during the oversight period on the other, uh, piece of legislation, and I worked with a little attorney and others to introduce a comprehensive bill on the subject last October, which I love with gratitude as the arm of this bill. And from the end of the council code, I came, I would introduce the bill in January, and also request a bit of support by the National Park Service before the residential real property tax force, which has not served a strange, I reckon, with the community. We recommend a simple tax force that I have implemented, such as a recommendation for the district's tax office to affirmably notify senior citizens that they may be eligible for additional real property tax credits where they currently do not stand. For this, the current mayor canceled the recent act sale of the unprofitable receiving funds from the tax credits to excellent place back in July. Specifically, the arm of this bill, which has one acquaintance on our chief financial officer, the head of events, the act sales of residents homes. As I said on earlier, this this bill last year, the act sales system has a disproportionate impact on elderly and economically disadvantaged residents. Most of them are part of the plant, but in a number of important ways. Since my hearing last year, I have been working with the AARP and ACTON, the Alliance to Help Women, Fund Partners, and Equity, with the proof that it would address a number of critical items in the manner of pushing the goal of this year. We are continuing to have dialogue and remember the concepts in this bill. They understand the AARP this morning, but the medical practice gestures and the presentation of equitable points that I raised in my emergency resolution in September. My arm of this bill, its panel types of notices and information requirements, the CFO must provide the government before ACTON is given the tax sale grant from the nation to ensure that it is provided to the government for a great tax sales. The bill also requires additional notice after tax sales, so that a homeowner will know how to own physical property and provide equitable limits on the rent of ACTON's homeowners must pay to renew their homes. As the chairman introduced the use of legislation which was passed to separate the arm of this bill in a family ways, the prayers and the tax sale that has occurred at the time of the senior citizen veteran or the civilian victim, the legal act will future out of 2014. It will establish the two thousand threshold of taxes served for the real property bill for tax levelling forward. And then, if there is any, uh, potential, we'll consider the tax bill, and if there is any, uh, potential, we'll consider the tax bill.
I'm calling to order this hearing. This is a public hearing of the committee of the whole. I am Phil Mendelson, Chairman of the Council and Chair of the Committee of the Whole. Today is Thursday, October 17th, 2013. The time is 10:14 in the morning. We're in room 412 of the Johnny Wilson Building. The subject of this morning's hearing is two pieces of legislation. P R 20-83, Sense of the Council Supporting Mayor Graves and Congresswoman Norton's Efforts to Maintain the FBI Headquarters in the District of Columbia Resolution of 2013, and Bill 20-364, Public Charter School Historic Preservation Amendment Act of 2013. The sense of the council resolution, which again is P R 20-83, which concerns the efforts to maintain the FBI headquarters within the District of Columbia, was introduced by council members Vincent B. Orange and Jack Evans on February 6th of this year. Bill 20-364, which is the Public Charter School Historic Preservation Amendment Act of 2013, was introduced by Councilmember Jim Graham at the June 26th, 2013, meeting of the Committee of the Whole. The purpose of, the stated purpose of the sense of the council resolution is to declare the sense of the council supporting Mayor Graves and Congresswoman Norton's efforts to petition the General Services Administration of the United States to maintain the headquarters of the Federal Bureau of Investigation within the District of Columbia and to support the administration in creating a plan for development of the land at the current FBI headquarters site. The stated purpose of Bill 20-364 is to ensure that the proposed demolition, alteration, subdivision, or new construction of a public charter school building owned by the District of Columbia will undergo the same review by the Historic Preservation Office as is required for the District of Columbia public schools buildings owned by the district. The record in this matter will be open for two weeks. That is, it will close at 5:00 P.M. on Thursday, October 31st, 2013. Having said all that, I believe in a couple of minutes, maybe one minute, we're going to be interrupted by a earthquake drill, and so I want to speak to that for a moment. We all have to participate in this, all of us, including me, and you, and everyone on the dais and in the audience. When we hear the announcement, we all have to, and the phrase is, drop, cover, and hold on. I did this a few years ago at a hearing. I felt a little silly, but it's important that we go through these drilling, drills. We should have more of these drills. Drop, cover, and hold on is the appropriate action to reduce injury and death during earthquakes, which, of course, we never have in the District of Columbia, but we did have a year and a half or maybe two years ago. And so, we just need to go through these drills so that we know how to respond and to reduce, therefore, the incidence, the chance of mistakes when a drill occurs. So, here goes. I think it lasts for a couple of minutes. I think they're supposed to give us an announcement first, and until I hear it, you're supposed to hear it, aren't we? Until we hear it, let me just say a little bit more. Drop to the ground before the earthquake-
... earthquake drills ever. Practice now, so you can protect yourself during a real earthquake. On August 23rd, 2011, at 1:51 P.M., a 5.8 earthquake affected the District of Columbia region. Practice now, so you can protect yourself during a real earthquake. This is an earthquake drill. Right now, drop, cover, and hold on. Drop to the floor now. During a large earthquake, the ground might jerk strongly and knock you down. Take cover under something sturdy to protect yourself from objects that can be thrown across the room. Hold on to your shelter until the shaking stops. If you can get under something, stay low and protect your head and neck with your arms. Now, look around. What objects might fall or be thrown at you that you should secure in place before a real earthquake? This drill is now over. Visit shakeout.org for simple steps that help you survive and recover from a major earthquake. Thank you for taking part in the great checkout. Have a good day, world.
Well, thank you all for participating. I heard on the radio that, I heard on the radio this morning that this drill is actually taking place across the country and in some other countries, and it's a fact that what one shouldn't do is run out of a building during an earthquake because pieces of the building could be falling off. And yet, when we had the earthquake in August, two years ago, there were people, the first thing they did was run out of the building, and fortunately, nobody was hurt. There were some cracks that were noticed in the ceilings and various hallways of this building, so it's good to practice these things, and we should be doing more of it. Having said all that, let's begin. The first item business here will be P R 20-83, the sense of the council supporting Mayor Graves and Congresswoman Norton's efforts to maintain the FBI headquarters in the District of Columbia. Jeff Miller is the only witness we have. If he'd come forward, and he is Director of Real Estate Office of the Deputy Mayor for Planning and Economic Development.
Good morning, Chairman Mendelson and members of staff of the Committee of the Whole. My name is Jeff Miller. I'm the Director of Real Estate for the Deputy Mayor's Office for Planning and Economic Development. I'm joined here by my Deputy Director, Namita Shaw. I'm pleased to present testimony on the FBI headquarters consolidation request for interest and the district's response to it. The U.S. General Services Administration, otherwise known as the GSA, issued a request for information in December of 2012, which sought ideas from the commercial real estate community and others, and other interested parties, on options for developing a new consolidated FBI headquarters. Responses to the RFI were intended to assist GSA in exploring redevelopment possibilities to exchange the current outdated and overcrowded J. Edgar Hoover Building located on Pennsylvania Avenue for the construction of a new state-of-the-art FBI headquarters facility located in the National Capitol Planning Area. Some of the critical, of course, I'm sorry, some of the criteria included in the RFI for the new facilities are as follows. It should contain up to 2.1 million square feet of space for 11,000 employees for consolidation of 21 existing FBI locations, contain no more than 4,300 parking spaces, and it's to be designed to inter-agency security level five standards and be built to meet gold standards. GSA received 35 responses to the RFI and has stated that it intends to use the information provided by respondents for planning purposes, and it may issue a request for proposal as a follow-up to the RFI. On March 4th, 2013, the district submitted a response to the RFI which proposed that GSA and FBI consider Poplar Point as a location for the new FBI headquarters. The district evaluated several district-owned sites as potential locations and determined that Poplar Point offered the best opportunity for both the FBI and the district. Located minutes from downtown D.C., Poplar Point presents GSA and FBI an opportunity for a new, secure facility that would remain connected to the heart of the National Capitol. Poplar Point contains 110 acres total, of which 70 acres are reserved to be maintained as parkland as required by federal law. In its proposal, the district envisioned a 10-acre FBI headquarters facility occupying a northern portion of the site while the remaining develop, developable area would be occupied by mixed-use neighborhood development. The site plan proposed would provide a natural infrastructure boundaries that would aid FBI in monitoring its perimeter, i.e. the Anacostia River, the 11th Street Bridge, and I-295. It is envisioned that the relocation of the FBI headquarters to Poplar Point could act as an economic development catalyst for the rest of the site. Additionally, the relocation of the FBI from Pennsylvania Ave. presents an opportunity for the district to reintegrate the J. Edgar Hoover Site into a down, into downtown D.C. Not only would a redeveloped Hoover Site generate millions annually to the district in property taxes, but a redeveloped site could also further a number of important planning goals. For example, reintroducing, the reintroduction of D Street would improve circulation and restore La Font Street to the grid. The addition of a ground, of ground floor retail at the Hoover Site would provide an opportunity for activated Pennsylvania Avenue sidewalk and streetscape, which would help enliven the area. Finally, following the request of the mayor and the council, the Office of the Chief Financial Officer conducted an independent study of impacts of the potential FBI location, a relocation. The study indicated that while the relocation of FBI off Pennsylvania Avenue to a site outside the district would result in a loss of jobs based in D.C., the redevelopment of the site would still generate an additional $28 million in yearly tax revenue if the site were redeveloped. At this time, the district is waiting further information from the GSA as to the timing of the RFP. In the meantime, the district is committed to the redevelopment of Poplar Point and continues to work through the various planning and environmental steps necessary to further the entitlement process. This concludes my testimony, and I'm happy to answer any question at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Do you know what the current status is of the GSA interest?
The interest in relocating the FBI?
Yes.
No, they've, they've been, we haven't heard anything beyond what we've heard after the RFI was, was issued.
So, for all we know, this was a, an idea they had in December 2012, and they've given up on it?
That, that may be the case.
And have you been able to look at what the other 34 submissions were? I think there were 35 submissions.
No, they were not publicly released. Some jurisdictions did release their, their proposals publicly, but all respondents did, were not released publicly.
Do you have a sense of some of the other proposals? Can you speak to them briefly?
Just from what I've, I've read in the, in the newspaper, there are some proposals that are, that include some sites out in Northern Virginia, as well as some sites in Prince George's County, but that's, that's about the, the extent of our knowledge.
Any sense of, I'm sure that FBI's security interests are paramount. Any sense of whether these other sites compete more favorably to Poplar Point in terms of security?
I, I think some of that is really at the, at, under the judgment of the FBI. We, I guess, so I can't speak to that, but I presume that we're all trying to satisfy that requirement.
You're familiar with the OCFO's analysis?
Yes.
Does the OCFO and its analysis look at Poplar Point, that site, and include in it the additional private development that you mentioned in your testimony?
I believe they do.
So, when they look at this and they see that it's favorable economically to the district, it's not just simply the FBI headquarters being at Poplar Point, it's the FBI headquarters plus private development at Poplar Point. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe so.
That's correct.
Who owns the land under the current FBI building?
It's my understanding it's, it's a federally owned.
And who owns the land under Poplar Point?
Currently, it's, it's owned by the, by the Fed, federal government. We are in the process right now of having that land transferred to us, going through the environmental process, a federal environmental process that will allow that to happen.
The transfer was authorized by legislation in what year?
2006, I believe.
2006, so seven years later, we're still working on the transfer, correct?
That's correct.
Do you have a sense of when that transfer will be complete?
Based on our current schedule, we're thinking about 24 months.
And isn't there a condition precedent to the transfer, which includes, I believe, relocating the helipad?
That's right. Helipad and the facilities that the National Park Service occupies on the site.
And where will they be relocated to?
There's a, there's a proposed plan to potentially relocate them either on Poplar Point but further north toward the 11th Street Bridge, and there are other sites in, in conversation as well, but that, that remains an outstanding issue.
So, the two years, 24 months, you said, to complete the transfer would require the relocation within those two years?
That's correct.
And NPS has not agreed to the-
We're still, we're still in conversations with them about it.
All right, so why should I think that 24 months is doable?
That's an excellent question. I think, I think that we're working diligently to get through that process. I think that actually, on the critical path is not the movement of the, of the, of the, the services that are located there, although it certainly is, is an important piece, but there's the, the NEPA process, the, the environmental process, which is really what we've been working through right now.
Yeah, lost me, but that just, but that adds more time. NEPA never gets done quickly.
We're in, we're in the midst of it right now, though. It didn't just start. It's, it's been ongoing for, I think, two years at this point.
So, when would the proposed impact statement be issued?
I'm sorry.
When would the impact statement be issued?
Well, there's the draft D N S, six to nine months, so-
I'm sorry, we're, we're conferring with our project manager.
Right. So, I think that the draft environmental impact statement should be completed in the next six to nine months, but we have been in discussions with the Park Service about potentially an early transfer if we do come to a conclusion or resolution on what the relocation plan for them would be. So, once there's an agreement and a plan in place, there could be portions of, of the site that could be transferred early so we could start environmental remediation.
I don't think the congressional law authorizer partial transfer does it. It requires that NPS, the NPS facility to be relocated.
I, my understanding is that our conversations with our, our Park Service counterparts, that, that could be a possibility if they were amenable to it.
Again, I think there's, I mean, I think that's a question of law. I haven't looked at the legislation recently, but the federal act specifies what conditions have to be met before the transfer can occur. NPS can agree all they want to, to a partial transfer, but if those conditions aren't met, and I believe it's to relocation of those facilities- met, and I believe it's to relocation of those facilities, they just have to occur.
There's already a letter to that.
Yeah. Do you want to?
Sit up.
Yeah.
I'm going to introduce my colleague, Joseph Lappin, who is the Director in Charge of this particular site.
What's your name again, Joseph?
Lappin, L-A-P-P-I-N. No, I just would add that there's been a letter already written by the National Park Service to the effect of the potential for early transfer of portions of the site under certain conditions. I don't have the legislation in front of me, but I think there has been some determination that if the plan was in place to relocate those facilities, that portions of the site could be transferred prior to the actual implementation, full implementation of relocation.
Would you provide us with a copy of the letter?
Certainly.
Thank you. The OCFO analysis is predicated on the development at Poplar Point being a private development that then is leased to the FBI? And because it would be a private development, the taxes would be paid to the district government? Am I understanding that correctly?
They, I believe they looked at both scenarios, one where the site with the FBI would be publicly owned and therefore not generate incremental taxes, and one where it would be a private lease transaction and would generate incremental taxes for the district.
Okay. So, they looked at both options, and the economic benefit to the district is much less if it's government-owned as opposed to a lease-back arrangement?
Absolutely.
So, let me go back over these questions I have. Regarding what is the current status of the proposed move of the FBI Headquarters? We don't know, and we haven't heard anything since March.
That's right. So, the responses went in in March, and we have not heard anything about any new RFP being issued.
And the GSA had indicated, I think this was in your testimony, Mr. Miller, that the FBI indicated they may issue an RFP?
Right.
So, with regard to my question here, what is the timeline for the FBI's consolidation? We haven't a clue.
That's exactly right.
And in this process, the GSA has not solicited anything with regard to the Pennsylvania Avenue site, am I correct?
That's my understanding. Again, we were a respondent, but we have not heard anything specific in follow-up to
So, in order for this to be a favorable proposition for the district, the most favorable scenario would be that the FBI site on Pennsylvania Avenue is sold to a private entity that develops it, and we're able to fully tax it.
Yes.
And Poplar Point transfers to the district government, and we sell or lease a long-term lease to a private developer who develops it for the FBI, and because it is a lease-back arrangement with the FBI, we would be able to fully tax it.
That's correct, with the additional understanding that, or expectation that putting the FBI at Poplar Point would spur additional development, additional demand down on that site, and of the 40 developable acres, 30 would then be developed additionally to support that.
Yes. And the worst possible scenario is that the federal government decides to keep its real estate on Pennsylvania Avenue across from the Justice Department and the Federal Triangle, and the FBI decides to acquire the property at Poplar Point so that we're not able to get real property taxes from. We would obviously get some of the spinoff taxes, the sales taxes from the employees, and a spinoff, obviously related to development that would occur.
Yes, but I think the way the GSA described the potential transaction would be that there would be some kind of land swap. So, by that very nature, they would not necessarily, under that scenario, they would not keep the FBI, or they would not keep the land upon which the FBI sits today. They would swap it for some different development opportunity.
Okay. If it's a swap, then they would own the property at Poplar Point?
That's one scenario.
So, we like the most profitable option, and we kind of don't want to think too much of the least profitable possibilities. Have you heard anything else with regard to what might possibly happen with the FBI? Or is the RFI that the GSA issued the last word to date?
I personally, nor do I think anybody in our office has heard anything in follow-up.
The only initial indication was that, at the earliest, they believed that they might issue an RFP by late summer, which has obviously come and gone, so we haven't heard anything further from that.
Give me just a second. Can you speak briefly, Mr. Miller, to whether there were alternative sites that we looked at besides Poplar Point?
Certainly. We, you know, based on the security requirements and the absolute size that were required or were put out in the RFI of 2.1 million square feet and a level-five security, it limited the number of sites that the district could actually present. We did look at Walter Reed briefly. We looked at St. Elizabeth's Hospital Site, the East Campus briefly. None of those seemed suitable based upon both what the community was looking for in those areas and also the master plans that we had already put in place for both those sites. And we thought Poplar was ideal because it was essentially a blank tableau.
In the OCFO's analysis, there's no, is there an accounting for infrastructure costs? Because my understanding is in our response to the RFI, we volunteered that we would pay for needed infrastructure. I think there's very little of any infrastructure at Poplar Point. An infrastructure would include streets, water, sewer?
That's correct. There is no existing infrastructure there, with the exception of a few roads and some modest sewers.
I don't know. About the analysis.
I'm sorry.
I don't know if the OCFO's analysis has taken that into account in terms of their impact on jobs and taxes.
And what's the, what do you estimate the cost of the infrastructure would be?
North of, I mean, that includes all those things.
Based on this study, it looks like about, just under $30 million.
You said, "based on this study." What are you referring to?
This was our internal analysis.
This was an internal analysis we did when we were first studying this ourselves. This is, a DEMP had provided analysis, a provider, DEMP had done internally analysis.
For the FBI or for other development?
This was specifically for the FBI.
I'm trying to look quickly at the 2006 law. In the "transfers contingent upon a plan," "on certification by the Secretary of Interior that the District of Columbia has adopted a land use plan for Poplar Point which meets the requirements of Section 302. The Director shall convey to the District of Columbia all right title and interest of the United States in Poplar Point." And 302 is the requirements for a land use plan. That plan hasn't been done.
That plan is part of our EIS, our environmental study, and will inform, the environmental study will also inform that plan, but it will be part of the environmental study that we're managing with the federal government.
And it says here, "The plan provides for the identification of existing facilities and related properties of the National Park Service and relocation of the National Park Service to replacement facilities and related properties." And then there's a lot of detail with regard to that. I mean, this just reads to me like it's a package. The package has to be complete before the conveyance can occur, not partially complete before a partial conveyance can occur, just the way I read it. Do you have a legal opinion to the contrary?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part of your question.
Do you have a legal opinion to the contrary?
I don't know that we have a legal opinion, but based on what you just read, and again, I don't have it in front of me unfortunately, but we can have a, it sounds like you're right in that we need a complete package of a plan certified by the Park Service that can include a plan and an identified site for the relocation. I don't know that based on what you just read, it requires the actual, complete, physical And like I said, I will provide the letter that was the culmination of some of these more detailed discussions.
Yes. Okay. Well, that would be helpful. Also, could you provide us with that, the internal analysis that you did with regard to the costs?
Sure.
Okay. If you would do that. I think I'm good for the moment. I appreciate your being here and your testimony. It helps us understand this better.
Thanks, sir.
I should ask before we move to the next item, is there anybody else who wishes to testify regarding this sense of the council resolution? Then we'll turn now to Bill 20-364, Public Charter School Historic Preservation Amendment Act of 2013. I have two witnesses. The first is ANC Commissioner Kent Baze. Come forward, please. You are Chair of Advisory Neighborhood Commission 1A. Let me ask if there's anybody else present before I turn to government who wishes to testify regarding this. You've got the floor, Commissioner.
Thank you, and good morning, Chairman Mendelson. As you indicated, my name is Kent Baze. I am the Chair of ANC 1A, and I would like to thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak on behalf of the Public Charter School Historic Preservation Amendment Act. I also want to thank or acknowledge Council Members Graham and Alexander, and thank them for supporting ANC 1A's resolution urging this legislation by introducing and co-sponsoring. What the Public Charter School Historic Preservation Amendment Act does is restore a process that was in practice until recently whereby capital projects undertaken by charter schools operating in district-owned public school buildings would have those projects reviewed by the Historic Preservation Office. A little more than a year ago, it was determined that such review was no longer appropriate for charter schools operating in these buildings as the projects were not deemed to technically be District of Columbia undertakings. Unfortunately, this is at odds with what can reasonably be presumed to be the intent of the District of Columbia retaining ownership of these buildings. The protection this bill affords is for district-owned school buildings currently supporting charter schools that are, first, not already designated historic landmarks, two, not located within a historic district, and lastly, eligible for being designated as a historic landmark. As this indicates, we are currently talking about a relatively small but important handful of buildings. However, with recent school closings and consolidations, and with many of the impacted buildings of the recent school closings falling outside of historic districts or not being in historically designated buildings, there is an increased risk to the architectural and cultural heritage of one of the District of Columbia's key assets, which are its historic school buildings. One thing I'd like to make very clear is that while I'm here today to underscore the importance of the District of Columbia's architectural heritage, I am also extremely supportive of charter schools using these beautiful buildings and when possible, and that there are currently many examples where a charter school moving into a former District of Columbia public school building has been the win-win that we all look for. Two examples within ANC 1A would be the Bruce, former Bruce School and the former Wilson Normal School, both of which were in a great state of disrepair when the charter schools moved in, and the charter schools did a beautiful job renovating these buildings, and that is what we would like to see moving forward. Unfortunately, by removing the design review process formerly provided by HPO, there now exists a situation whereby unnecessary conflict can arise between the charter school and the community during the construction process. What I would like to point out as an example would be Cesar Chavez's recent project to put in addition onto the former Bruce School. When they first moved in in 2009, HPO did review the renovations. It's a beautiful job. It's respectful. It embraces the character of the building. Without the review, Chavez, and to be fair, Chavez reached out to ANC 1A early in the process. We expressed some concern about whether or not this would go through the Preservation Office. We felt they'd understood that concern, and rightfully so, when they applied for the building permit. It was bounced, you know, as appropriate. It went to HPO, who then pushed back saying, "We don't review these projects anymore." So, ANC 1A was left with the difficult decision of moving forward with a landmark nomination, which would have been very late in the process, negatively impacted the school and their desire to have a gymnasium, which is one thing we did not want to do, so we chose to move forward with the landmark nomination after permits were issued so that we could have some protection moving forward. The Bruce School, just to be clear, is a very important school, especially to the community. It was built in 1898. The architect was William Poindexter. This is his only school. And to put this in context, this is perhaps the oldest public building still in existence in this immediate community. This school was purposefully built to educate the African-American community that was growing in the area. It's in close proximity to Howard, and when it was built, there was little to nothing existing around it. So, it has a very deep legacy and is good documentation of how the city was growing north of the District of Columbia, or north of the city of Washington at the time. So, protecting it is the right thing to do. But in closing, what I'd like to say is, the passing of this bill actually restores a review process that was formerly in place. It also restores to the process the win-win that we're hoping for by supporting charter schools, supporting historic preservation, and making sure that the protections that are in place do not negatively impact a charter school late in the process should a community be concerned with a building or a construction project and completely derail it and have the school put in a situation where months of planning and expense have been wasted the school put in a situation where months of planning and expense have been wasted due to late concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Baze. You are the Chair of the Commission?
I am.
Is your testimony, was it adopted by the ANC?
The testimony was not adopted, so I'm speaking on behalf of myself. I'm identifying myself as the Chair because that's one of my titles. To give you an idea of where this was, we did consider and adopt a resolution in June of this year, asking for this resolution, or this legislation to be introduced. We had ten commissioners of our 12 present, and the resolution was adopted unanimously.
I'm asking Ms. Jacobs, to my left, if we have a copy of the resolution. She thinks we do. Of June 12, 2013?
That is correct.
Okay. I just need to know, because as I think you know, we're entitled to give the, we're required, I'm not sure we're required, but we do try to give the ANC its recommendations, written recommendations, great weight. And while I take seriously your testimony, and it's fine that you're testifying on behalf of the ANC, I get that, not necessarily the testimony itself has been approved, we just need to understand. We've been joined by Councilmember Jim Graham, who's the author of this legislation, and I do have some questions, but I'll turn to him if he wants to make a statement or has any questions. Mr. Graham?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and I want to thank you most particularly for convening this hearing on a bill that was really just introduced a few, a short while ago. And I was the author of the bill, along with Councilmember Alexander, who was a co-sponsor. And I want to commend you, Commissioner Baze, you know, for your work on these issues. I mean, I have found your contribution to be absolutely critical in terms of preservation of our important buildings in Ward 1. And your role at Parkview in terms of the Recreation Center and the Elementary School, you know, has really been very, very contributing. And you are a very, very fine ANC Commissioner, and I give you, I give him great weight at all times because of the talent and ability and dedication that you bring to this. I want to say that I introduced this bill after Commissioner Baze brought to my attention the issues regarding Cesar Chavez. And by the way, Cesar Chavez, pronounced his name Caesar. I have, I've confirmed this with his granddaughter. So I always said Caesar, and sometimes people say Sasa, but it's Caesar for Caesar. And so if it's good enough for his pronunciation, it's good enough for mine. Anyway, Cesar Chavez, which is the old Bruce School, as you pointed out, is a wonderful educational environment. And the Principal there, as you also point out, and everybody associated with Chavez, has done a remarkable job in terms of the main buildings. And I'm very proud to say that we actually have two 19th century schools that are now back in service as schools, one being the old Bruce School, now Cesar Chavez, and the other being the Harrison Elementary at 13th and V. And that's Meridian Charter School. And so both of these are, I just, I'm so proud of what they've done, and I was very supportive in both instances for those schools, those charter schools. In addition to that, we have, as you point out, the old Wilson Building, which is now Carlos Rosario International Public Charter School. And they, the Principal there, Sonia Gutierrez, or the Director and Founder, Sonia Gutierrez, is absolutely the best. She's the best. And they took this building, I tell you, I looked at this building when I came into office, and I was sure it was just going to burn down. One day I'd be woken up, and I'd say, "Well, the Wilson Building, the Wilson Building, as it then was called, has just burned down. There's squatters and homeless people in the building making fires." And I was terribly concerned about this, so I worked very hard to see that the school was put back into proper use. And Sonia Gutierrez and all the people that worked with her have done a superb job. But here we reach an issue which, in some ways, is technical, but in some ways is very, very substantive, which is we just simply want our historic buildings to have the same kind of process that, historic school buildings, to have the same kind of process for charter schools as they do for public schools. And I think this is so essential, and it doesn't take anything away, anything away from those people who are running these schools, because, and you were very sympathetic to this when we talked about it, you were the first to say, "Well, they've got to have this gymnasium." You know, they've got to have, at Cesar Chavez, it makes sense. It addresses quality of education. It's good for the kids. All of that is very important. But these schools have an important historical contribution that they have made and continue to make to Ward 1 and the city in general. The Bruce School, of course, was named after Senator Bruce, who was an African-American senator from Mississippi, if I remember, who ran into various problems there, of course, with every other black person when Reconstruction ended. And he ended up in Washington, D.C., a beautiful, beautiful home right next to the Convention Center, still standing. And so, as you point out, it has a terrific importance in terms of our history. And the same is true of the minor building, not the minor building, excuse me, the Wilson Building. It's a sadder history because that building where Carlos Rosario is, as you know, was originally the segregated school to train white teachers before it went to Federal City College in New D.C. So we're redeeming that history, that sad history, by having this multicultural, multi-ethnic, international public charter, adult public charter school. So, Mr. Chairman, I just want to conclude by saying, I think this is a very, very reasonable step so that we can assure the continued historic preservation of our important schools, historic schools, insofar as public charter school use. We want them to be going to public charter schools. There's nothing better than a historic purpose which is renewed and reinvigorated today in modern times. So a school should be a school, I think. So, but this is an important step, and I thank you very much, and I thank ANC 1A for raising this issue and bringing it to our attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Mr. Bruce also was a recorder of deeds, a recorder of deeds for the District of Columbia. Mr., Commissioner Baze, in your testimony, you say, "A little more than a year ago, it was determined that review by HPO was no longer appropriate for charter school buildings." On what basis do you say that?
I say that based on my conversations with the Historic Preservation Office, that, for example, the two schools mentioned, both Bruce and the former Wilson Teachers College, when the charter schools first moved into them, and in the case of Cesar Chavez going in in 2009, HPO did review those projects, and they turned out beautifully. However, it's my understanding in having a conversation with the Historic Preservation Office that there was a determination made subsequent to that, that in projects that where charter schools are spending charter school money, not District of Columbia money, that it did not rise to the test of a District of Columbia undertaking, and therefore, based on the current law, that HPO could not review those projects. Again, perhaps this is something that someone from the Preservation Office could confirm. They would not, there's nothing in writing that I can get, but I do understand that they do not currently review these, even though they once did.
I have no other questions for you. Thank you for your testimony. Thank you for taking the time to come down here.
Thank you.
We'll turn now to the government witnesses. Stephen Campbell, Senior Planner, Department of General Services. Before you sit down, we swear in, usually we swear in government witnesses, so if you'd raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm under penalty of law that the testimony you're about to give to the Council of the District of Columbia, Committee of the Whole, is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. You answered in the affirmative. You may be seated. When you're ready.
Good morning, Chairperson Mendelson, and members and staff of the Committee of the Whole. I am Stephen Campbell, Senior Planner in the Planning Office of the Department of General Services, or DGSE. I am pleased to testify today on Bill 20-364, the Public Charter School Historic Preservation Amendment Act of 2013. In 2006, district law was amended to require district agencies to consult with the State Historic Preservation Office before undertaking design, construction, or permit approval for construction projects on certain buildings. This requirement was meant to ensure that district agencies timely address preservation concerns for eligible or historic designated buildings. Between 2006 and 2012, 15 charter school projects were reviewed by the State Historic Preservation Officer. However, a legal opinion in 2012 from the Office of the Attorney General removed public charter schools from this requirement, as they are not considered district agencies. This bill amends the Historic Landmark and Historic District Preservation Act of 1978. Currently, the D.C. Code requires that a government entity responsible for a project on district-owned property verify whether the property is listed or eligible for listing on the D.C. inventory of historic sites. The law currently applies to a deputy mayor, the head of a subordinate agency, or the head of an independent agency. The proposed bill would amend the D.C. Code to also require the head of a public charter school to consult with the State Historic Preservation Officer for projects that would alter a district-owned property. This consultation is intended to provide the Preservation Officer a reasonable opportunity to comment on the project if the project is listed or eligible for listing on the inventory. The bill would require this consultation and review to occur before the expenditure of funds for design or construction, or the seeking of, or permits, licenses, or approval. The Department of General Services and the State Historic Preservation Officer support this legislation for the following reasons. Charter school projects on district government property should receive the same review as applied to other district agencies. Such review will help protect the district's historic assets and the long-term value of the properties. The bill will provide greater certainty in the public charter school review process, and the bill will eliminate unnecessary or ill-timed landmark applications by communities since review of listed or eligible properties would be required. With respect to the district's property surplus and disposition process managed by DGSE, there are a few changes that can be incorporated into the existing surplus and disposition process for school buildings. If DGSE determines there is no other suitable public use for a former school building released by the D.C. Public Schools, DGSE must provide a right of first offer to public charter schools under the Landreau or School Reform Act. As part of this process, DGSE releases a solicitation for use of the property. DGSE reviews all bids, and if a bidder is chosen, will negotiate the typical 50-year lease, which may be 25 years with a 25-year option, with the charter school for the district-owned property. The Council will ultimately determine whether the school is awarded to a chosen bidder. To comply with the changes the law is suggesting, DGSE would include into the solicitation that if a bidder is chosen for award on a school that is historic or historic-eligible, they must meet with the Historic Preservation Officer about any proposed plans. DGSE could further stipulate through the solicitation that future meeting on historic or historic-eligible properties must occur as a condition of preparing and filing the surplus and disposition package with the Council, and that contained meetings are a prerequisite to development of the property and are integral to the overall process. DGSE confirmed with the Historic Preservation Review Board that the State Historic Preservation Officer could provide DGSE a letter to confirm whether the property is historic or historic-eligible once DGSE has determined an awardee for a charter school. The meetings between the public charter school and Historic Preservation Officer would also assist DGSE during the lease negotiation process. DGSE considers the capital investment a school expects to make into a leased building as part of the determination of the rental credit. Although at this stage, design plans and budgets are not final, knowing the estimated capital improvements of a school's potential construction project at the time of lease negotiation allows DGSE to calculate potential rent credits to the lesssee prior to the disposition's approval by the Council. In conclusion, it is definitely worthwhile to include public charter schools in the group of entities that must have plans reviewed by the State Historic Preservation Officer. Our historic, or potentially historic, buildings have a story to tell, and it is in our best interest to ensure that story will be told to future generations. DGSE can integrate the requirements of the legislation into the district's legal requirements under the Landreau Act for school building dispositions. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. In your testimony, on the last page, you speak to, with respect to the district's property surplus and disposition process managed by DGSE, there are a few changes that can be incorporated into the existing surplus and disposition process.
Yes.
Are you proposing those as changes to the law, or rather, you're speaking to, if we pass this legislation, these are administrative changes that DGSE won't be making?
The second. These are administrative changes that DGSE would be making in order to comply with the law as it is written, as proposed.
Okay. These properties, as I recall, when we surplus a school, we're not actually selling the school. We continue to own the building and the land, and we have a long-term lease with the charter school, correct?
In every case that I'm aware of, that is the case, yes.
Well, that certainly has been a recent practice. So the fact that the charter schools, by this opinion apparently, are exempt means that a landmark that is in our inventory, meaning the government's inventory, can be altered without HPO review, which could negatively affect the value of our property, correct?
Correct. Without the benefit of this law, that is correct.
Do you, would you please provide us with a copy of the Attorney General opinion?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay. I'm inclined to argue against it, but I don't really need to do that because we have the bill, but I would like to see the opinion. Let me just go through, look through my list of questions here. The, your understanding, now you're with DGSE.
Yes.
The Historic Preservation Office, which I believe is within the Department of Consumer Regulatory Affairs?
It's a subset of the Office of Planning.
I misspoke. That was a terrible thing I just said. Historic Preservation Office, which is within the Office of Planning, they're the ones who would do the work under this legislation, because they're the ones who do the review.
The simple answer is yes. They would review to confirm if a property is historic or historic-eligible, and they would issue a letter to that effect.
Yes, but then the charter school wants to make, put a gym on. HPO would be the one that would look at, do the review of the gym.
That is correct.
Can you testify that they can absorb the cost of this?
My simple answer is yes. As indicated, there are 15, there are only 15 such projects over the course of the last seven years. So in the natural course of the work that they do, and in the best interest of protecting historic preservation, historic properties, it's an integral part of the responsibility that they gladly take on.
Could you confirm that for us? Give me just a second here. Do you have any questions? Please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and you've asked the salient questions, I think, and we've gotten good responses. I want to thank you for your support of this legislation. Do you have any idea of how many, how many plans by public charter schools? Do you have any idea of how many, how many plans by public charter schools operating within D.C.-owned buildings went unreviewed by each, by the Historic Preservation Office since, I guess it would be since 2012, right? That's when the opinion was issued.
I do not know that offhand. I can get back to you with that. I imagine it would only be at most two or three.
Well, we have two and we're one. And so, again, superb school administration, superb education. I'm very supportive of all of that. But this opinion was issued in 2012, so it hasn't been very long, so we could act and prevent others from going that same route.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's good. I think that makes a lot of sense. Well, thank you very much.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Don't go anywhere yet. Let me just look through anything else I want to ask. How long have you been with DGS?
For about five years. I joined in November of 2008.
When it was...
At that time, it was Office of Property Management, and shortly thereafter became Department of Real Estate Services.
Yes. Duress. I used to call it the Department of Duress. All right, D-Ras, Mr. Graham. So, you've been around when some of these schools that were reviewed, you said, I think it was fifteen schools, between 2006 and 2012?
Yes.
Have you, do you recall whether significant problems in the sense of misunderstandings and enforcement with any of those reviews? Or were they pretty much, the reviews were, I don't want to say routine, but easy?
I was not involved in the schools, even though there was the disposition process that was, that underwent an evolution. I was not specifically involved in the schools and schools' review, especially related to historic preservation. I can get information back to you about whether there were special difficulties. Generally speaking, we've had a good and an improving working relationship with historic preservation, so there may have been problems in the past, but we can get back to you on any of those factors.
There's no problems that come to mind?
No, I am not.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I'm not asking you to get back to me on that, but you will give me the opinion?
Yes.
And you will check with Historic Preservation Office on the cost and let us know if they're saying there's a cost?
Absolutely.
Mr. Graham, did you have anything else? I appreciate, Mr. Campbell, your testimony and the administration's support for this legislation. If you could get back to us within the next couple of weeks?
Absolutely.
Sure you can. I would appreciate it. The record in this matter closes two weeks from today. That's 5:00 p.m., Thursday, October 31st. I just mention that for anybody who's watching who wishes to comment. Thank you again, Mr. Campbell.
Very good.
I think at this point, we're going to conclude this hearing. Again, this has been a hearing on two measures. One is a sense of the Council Resolution, P.R. 20-83, concerning maintaining the FBI headquarters in the district, and the other is Bill 20-364, Public Charter Schools, Historic Preservation Amendment Act of 2013. The time is now 11:14 in the morning, and this hearing is adjourned.